Help us recognize Holly Sheridan-Pritchard.
Yes, we want to recognize Holly, who can't be with us tonight, but who has been the head of circulation at the library for almost 25 years. For that quarter of a century, the public has known her for her warm welcome of all age groups at the circulation desk, her unstanding assistance and helpful ways with museum passes, meeting room bookings, and all things library. She's embarking on a new life chapter, and we wish her well as she starts her well-deserved retirement.
Great, thank you, Ellen. And maybe I'll lead us all in a round of applause, recognizing and thanking Holly Sheridan-Pritchard. Thank you, Holly, for your service. Anything else from open forum tonight from the board? Okay, any other? Yep, Kristen?
A few things. I would like to thank former Chief Joe Targ for his service as our Emergency Management Director for the past six months. You may have known that he did retire from his fire chief services back in December, but we kept him on board for Emergency Management Director until the end of this month. And then we welcome Mike Dennehy and Andy Sherman, who will be co-emergency management directors come July 1st. And they certainly had their hands full this week where we had put out some emergency warnings related to the heat and whatnot. So again, thank you to Chief Targ, and thank you to the incoming Emergency Management Co-Directors. I also want to remind residents that we have water restrictions in place. We had a failure of one of our wells last week. Pleased to announce that the well has been fixed and is back online, but the tanks are still filling, so please curtail any outdoor watering. The Water Department will put out some additional notices tomorrow. Right now, we're in a Phase 3. Water restriction will be lifted to a Phase 2 tomorrow, but we still do need to watch our water usage at that point in time. And would also like to thank Ellen Rainville, the Board of Library Trustees, and the Permanent Town Building Committee for a wonderful groundbreaking ceremony yesterday. I know some of us were able to go over there and speak and see the ongoings. And also wanted to thank First Parish Church for hosting that event for us yesterday. It was some extreme heat. We did a little bit of ceremony with throwing some dirt and with our shovels and our hard hats, but had a great welcome reception at the Hall of First Parish Church. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for reminding us about the groundbreaking. It was a special, special event. Anything from the attendees tonight for open forum? Yeah, Megan, please.
Megan, I'm 44. Self-serviced. I just want to speak again about the reappointment process that's on the agenda for tonight. I know there's quite a few names on different boards and committees of reappointment. And again, the board's had over a year to fix this broken process, and I want to keep saying it, that it's still broken. At the very least, I think the public deserves to know how many other people have applied for some of these positions that are being reappointed. These appointments are not intended to be lifetime appointments or appointments until the person is sick of it. It's for a set time limit. So again, I want to say that again, that you really should consider other people that have submitted activity forms. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Megan. And we, just for the public, we did talk about this issue in our last meeting. And I think, Kristen, please correct me, but I think in the next meeting, we're going to review the best practice guidelines that we now intend to publish to all committees and make part of the onboarding process.
That will be on the agenda on July 8th.
Okay, great. Thank you for the reminder, Megan. Anything else, or anything else online from the public?
I don't see anything online.
Okay. I'll move to our 705 item, which is the Consent Agenda.
This is supposed to be Parish Center for the Arts.
Oh, thank you, okay. So first up is a request from the town common. The event is concerts on the common, and the applicant should be Parish Center for the Arts. So it's misprinted here on our agenda. So the applicant is Parish Center for the Arts. The dates are July 12, August 16, and August 17, 2025, time 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. Second event is the Welcome Back Barbecue. The applicant is First Parish Church United. The date is September 7, 2025, and the time is 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Any questions about those requests? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, Sinamis. We're now at our 707 item, and we welcome Sandhya up to the table here, if you please. Thanks, Sandhya, for her service on the Westford Economic Development Committee. But tonight, she's here in different capacity.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandhya Ayar. My name is Sandhya Ayar. I'm a resident of Westford. Sorry, I've been on too many select board hearings in Lexington, and it's coming naturally to me. So my name is Sandhya Ayar. I am a resident of Westford. And for the record, I live in Sixth Southwick Circle, Westford. And tonight, I'm here with another citizen of Westford, May Johnson, and I would request her to be promoted as a participant.
And May Panta, is that?
May, yeah, that's, yes.
Sure, if you can promote that, sure. Great. Anyone else?
No, that will be all. Thank you. So tonight, we are here to present the Select Board with local voting rights for permanent residents as a next step for us to join forces with other communities within Massachusetts who have petitioned to the House and Senate to allow for the state to allow for local voting rights for permanent residents. Next slide, please. So what the objective, as I mentioned, is authorization to petition Massachusetts General Court to allow lawful permanent residents, that's green card holders, to vote in municipal elections. Again, this is just in the municipal elections and town meeting vote. This will not be to have a post like a Select Board or any other post within the town government. It is more to have a voting right. And that will be all. Next slide, please. So just to give an idea of permanent residents or green card holders, most of the green card holders live, work, raise their family here in Westford. There are many, many folks who have their livelihoods here. They have built a family. They have businesses here. Their kids go to the school. They have been contributing towards infrastructure that we see in Westford, including J.V. Fletcher Library and many, many other contributions towards the Westford fabric. And it would be great to have a voice and not just have taxes paid towards these municipal operations. Next slide, please. Just to provide some data again, it's very difficult to really go out there and get exact number of how many permanent residents versus how many of them are citizens here in Westford, but we were still able to pull out. And thank you to the Westford Clerk to give us a lot of these numbers. The current population is 25,000. Registered voters is 19,500. That in itself shows that there's not a lot of gap that we are filling here, but still, it is a number. So it's not about the number, but it's about giving, providing that right to a permanent resident. Just from Massachusetts data, this is from back in 2023. They haven't updated their numbers yet, by the way, with the new government. So it's currently naturalized citizens are 670,000 versus non-citizens are 590,000, almost 46%, 46.7% out of the 100% US citizenship status. Next slide, please. No taxation without representation. This is a founding principle which the nation started back in 1775 in Boston, Lexington, Concord, and including Westford. This was a policy, which was the first policy, and most of the nation values this policy and was built on this policy. And we definitely, after so many years, we would want to respect it again and absolutely have permanent residents be a voice in the decision-making. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned before, inclusive participation helps strengthen our government. It really, really helps diversity. It helps us build a new community that is forward-thinking. It helps more representation, but at the same time, it also increases the participation amongst the residents. Next slide, please. One of the things that I was asked to do is how about defining who the folks who are not citizens would be eligible to vote? And that, I would say, that any green card holder who would be, except for their citizenship status, would be eligible. So basically, the definition of citizenship is pretty much there in state as well as the federal law of anyone who's 18 or above the age of 18 who's eligible to vote is under the US citizen, and that would be same extended to the green card. Next slide, please. Some of the other Massachusetts towns and cities that have adopted this would be Cambridge, Somerville, Newton, Brookline, Amherst, Weyland, and Lexington very recently. When I say that they have adopted, adopted by the town meeting, and now it is under the state and the legislative court for them to decide of how this would be forwarded to be allowed by any of these communities to put this into action. Next slide, please. So I'm here to seek some guidance from the Select Board as well as to see if the Select Board would be open to bringing this in a future town meeting, if you would want us to go to some of the residents and create a stakeholder group or some sort of a working group to help us develop this process. I'm more than happy and willing to start working with the town manager's office as well as the Select Board to see what the next step would be. So it's almost like I'm here to get some more guidance of how Westford would look at this as a petition in the next town meeting.
Thank you very much. This is a great opener. So I have just a few questions about process, really, for Kristen, and then open up to the board, and then open up to the public. And I think what's on the table, just to set the agenda, what's on the table, I think, tonight is, do we think it would be wise to impanel a citizens' sort of action committee to go and see community input, further investigate, identify issues of procedure, concerns about voting integrity, whatever else might come up as part of a study? We could ask a group to do that. That's what we could decide tonight. We probably won't decide or make any recommendation tonight about whether this would proceed as a citizens' petition separately or as an article put forward by the Select Board. We probably want to get more input and think about that a bit. And we probably won't make a recommendation about what town meeting this would, if it does proceed, would fit best in. I think annual town meeting is probably best in the spring. I think that's kind of the most sort of edge of public education, the most lead-up, will get the best engagement. But we're not going to decide that. Well, maybe we have already decided that. We've already set the warrants.
We have not set the warrant. So the warrant opens on July 22.
Okay. So we're a little ways.
But I think it fits a bill for the annual, if we can.
Yeah, I would think that that's, I mean, the goal would be to get, if this proceeds, the goal is to get a full discussion. I think we'd get a better, more full discussion. But we don't actually decide that tonight. We'll decide that basically implicitly when we close the warrant for fall town meeting. Okay, so just procedurally, Kristen, so the way something like this moves is it goes to town meeting. Is it a majority vote?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so with a majority vote, I guess the Select Board would be directed to send it to?
To the legislature.
Legislature for?
A bill.
And a home rule petition?
Correct.
Okay. And basically, the bill doesn't exist yet or it's in process in some way? So there actually would have to be legislation formed about this?
For the town of Westford specifically.
So each of these town requests is proceeding separately? There's not a generalized bill?
That is correct.
Okay. So with that in hand, and do we know whether any of these home rule petitions have actually turned into legislature so far?
Not in Massachusetts.
Not yet, okay. So there's some possibility that it would be there for some period of time until some path gets resolved at the legislature? Should this legislature bring it forward, present the legislation, and it gets voted in? I'm not sure if you know this. Does it then come back to the town for any reason? Or once that happens?
My understanding is, once it happens, it becomes law. But we can double-check that.
Okay. And does it actually become law? Or does it just allow us to modify our charter?
Well, it becomes law in the town of Westford.
Okay. So it becomes law as it applies to Westford? There's no town charter change?
Yeah.
Great. Those were a few of my procedural questions. Thanks for your patience. Yeah, Chris?
Have you had the opportunity to speak with our state representative and senator about this?
I have not. That was my next goal after seeing how the Select Board wanted us to proceed, to go and speak to the state senator and state legislative delegation for Westford.
The state representative does know that this is on the agenda this evening, and I believe that they will be tuning in or watching another point inside.
Fantastic. And just a quick second question, if you don't mind. I may have misunderstood you. I think it was your second slide. Did you say that the intent was not to allow for green card holders to vote in elections for Select Board and other town elected officials?
Not to be part of the elected official board. It's more like voting rights.
They'd be able to vote, but they couldn't run for?
They cannot run for a Select Board.
They cannot run for Select Board or any of them.
Why do you want to do that?
So this is about voting rights, and this is not about getting to... Each town and each legislature and each town bylaw is separate. If the Westford bylaw allows for non-citizen resident to be on a board or a committee, that's fine by me. There are some towns and communities in Massachusetts that do not allow for that, which is why we did not include that in here, so.
And just to clarify, you're saying not on an elected board committee? Certainly, we'd love to have residents, regardless of their citizen status, be on a volunteer board committee, just for people watching.
That's good.
Thank you.
Our bylaw does not allow for the Finance Committee members to...
Yep.
So you have to be a citizen to be a Finance Committee member. For our bylaw.
But that's the only one?
That's the only one, yes.
Okay, thanks. John?
All green card holders are eligible for citizenship. Is that correct?
All green card holders are eligible for applying for a citizenship after five years of being a... Five years. Five.
Okay.
Yes.
So in your proposal, it would be automatic? If you got a green card, you'd be able to vote in a local election?
So, yes, if you have a permanent residency or a green card, you will be allowed to. Yes, that's right, automatic.
You still have to register to vote through some process?
Oh, yes. I mean, also, the question is whether they would be, yes.
They have to register.
Similar to what a normal citizen would be doing is register to get vote, yeah, voting rights.
This may not be a fair question, but do you have any sense as to why someone had a green card and would be here for that length of time, three to five years, and could apply for citizenship? And many of them do, in fact, most of them do. Why they would not want to do that?
Yes, that's a great question, and I should have included that in my presentation, actually. A lot of countries do not have dual citizenship. So if I have been here in the US, and I'm from India, and India does not have dual citizenship option, so what would happen is if I apply for my citizenship, which I intend to, but if I did that, I would have to surrender my passport and my Indian citizenship. So I would not have a dual citizenship. And I do know of a lot of families and friends who do not want to lose their ability to go back to their country in the future or if they have investments or family back in their country to lose their citizenship of their own country.
Just as an add to, my brother-in-law started off as an Israeli citizen and became a US citizen. So from the time he could apply until the time he actually got a citizenship was a significant period of time. So you've got five years before you can apply, and then you've got the time between you apply and you get it. That would be the gap.
I think it's 10 to 15 years, generally.
Just for background. So if one of the questions is, well, they're only waiting five years. Waiting five years until they can apply, and then they're waiting until it actually goes through. So that total length is 10 to 15 years.
Choice, you have a choice.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, Sean?
So maybe this goes to the point that I think that we need more information on this. First of all, I appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate your honesty about not having certain information, but at least that would influence my vote, right? Like, how many Westford residents are we talking about? We don't have that. I appreciate you getting this stuff statewide. Are these folks who are renting, owning, right? Tax-paying folks, et cetera? So I think that we need, or at least I would like answers to those before kind of making any meaningful decision. And then, from a logistics standpoint, you know, you do have some concerns, right? Like, because the current law in Massachusetts, I believe, is that you cannot check someone's license for them to vote. So it's like, how is a town, are we going to enforce something like this, right? So can you require them to show their green card, essentially, show their papers? And what does that look like? So, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot of procedural questions. And it'd be interesting to know if other communities have laid this out. Because presumably, you would have to present documentation to register, like people do now.
Right.
And then you'd be on a special register roll. But yeah, all that logistics and making sure that you could maintain election integrity would also be a question on my mind.
Sure.
Are there any other states in the United States that have passed this or in the process of passing this?
I definitely know New York has, but I'd be interested in... And there are other states that are in the process, but New York, for sure, I think has passed this one, yes.
I want to make sure we get questions from the public before we move to any kind of discussion deliberation, but any other questions from the board for now?
I'd like to hear from the public.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public that would like to?
We have three people.
There's three online as well.
Okay. Dennis, if you could reintroduce yourself, that'd be great.
Excuse me, the pollen's got my throat here. Dennis Yalvin, 90 Conker Road. And I'm going to speak critically about this proposal. And let me preface my remarks by saying that my life has been involved in immigration. Both my grandparents were from another country. I grew up in a bilingual home, a bilingual neighborhood. I have my closest family now. I have two members who have gone through the immigration process. One has her citizenship, one has a green card. I'm very familiar with the process. I know how expensive it is. And so I understand what your concerns are. But I just want to say that there's a little bit more at stake here. And I think you need to really think about that before you go down this road. And the first one is, the proponent offered the 18-year voting age, which is basically the 26th Amendment. And it's very important to understand that the prefacing line, the first line, is, applies to American citizens. Now, the operating amendment that I think really, amendment that really applies to what we're talking about is the 14th Amendment. And the 14th Amendment basically establishes what the rules of citizenship is, are. It defines a citizen as a person who has either been naturalized or been born in the country. And it also makes issues of prohibition that no state can impose or enact any law that can impose upon the privileges or the immunities of any person who is a citizen of the United States. That, I think, is operative here. Now, how does that play in? You are still, in the town of Westford, Massachusetts, is still a part of the United States of America, okay? So people here who are voting as citizens have privileges and amenities. If you were to allow non-citizens to vote, even in a local election, you would be impinging upon the rights of the citizens because for every citizen that voted pro on something, a non-citizen voting y or no would cancel that vote out, and that would deteriorate the right of the citizen to vote. Okay, so that's a very important distinction. I think it would be the center part of legal distinction. Somebody mentioned had it been done before. New York City tried this, they lost it in court, in the Supreme Court, in the New York Supreme Court. Also, it's important to understand that the governing principle that rides over all of this is Article 6, Section 2, which imposes the United States Constitution as the supreme law of the land on the country. All right, so even if you were to get this passed in the town through a town meeting, and you brought it to the State House, and the State House enacted it, as soon as they enacted it, they would be in violation of the Constitution. And there would most definitely be some sort of federal action about that. I think that's, at least, it's a pretty good bet. Now, here locally, there's even another prohibition. And if, for those of you who are familiar with town meeting time, and I know everybody reads that regularly, I refer you to Chapter 1, Section 4, Paragraph 3. That section prohibits any illegal act from being brought to town meeting. In other words, you can't bring it in as a special town meeting or a special meeting. You can't bring it as a warrant article if it's an illegal act. Obviously, if you are offering to change a citizen's right to vote, you are engaging in an act protected by the Constitution, which would constitute an illegal act. And I'm sure somebody would bring a civil suit against that. All right? So those are things that you need to really bear in mind here. Also, a simple side thing is that, consider the administrative burden that you're going to put on poor Laurie Shah downstairs, okay? Laurie already has to fathom through information coming in from the registry on motor vehicles to see who's claiming citizenship and registration. This would call for her to keep a separate list to identify who the green card registrants are. Now, that is a ponderous task that she's not prepared for, and I don't think that the town is ready to invest that kind of money into that. don't think that the town is ready to invest that kind of money into that. So I, I still think the best, the best, I understand the situation with the countries that there's no dual citizenship, but I mean, we, from our end of it, we are not obstructing anybody from becoming a citizen to have full protection. And it's very important to understand that the sovereignty issue, which is what is at stake here, goes voting, citizenship, sovereignty. That sovereignty is, as Judge Washington says, underlines all of our rights and our freedoms. If you tamper with that, you're going down the wrong direction. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dennis.
Can we take someone from online? Could we take everyone in the room first?
Well, why don't we take someone online? So if you don't mind, sir, we'll go back and forth between online and.
So I'm going to allow Phil Harmon. Phil Harmon, I'm going to allow you to talk.
Hi, Phil, welcome.
Yeah, hi. I just, I just wanted to make one comment about it. The petitioner, I didn't catch her name, but she, she had mentioned that many people don't want to give up their other citizenship, they want to have their dual citizenship. And voting, voting is about a, a commitment to long-term citizenship, you know? When you vote on things, many of these votes in these, you know, in these meetings are about long-term issues. I think that somebody has to make that commitment, and the five-year process to become a citizen, you know, is about that commitment. So I just wanted to mention that, you know? I mean, it'd be very easy for, you know, people with, you know, ulterior motives to come in and vote in destructive manners, and, you know, and then, you know, when it's all said and done, up and leave, and go back to their home country. I don't think that's a very good road to travel here. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Phil. Please.
Hi, good evening. Neil Thomas, Sanl Elhamsd Road. I'm an immigrant. I wasn't planning on being here when I first came across. I was working on contract, but I met the love of my life, and I ended up staying. Immediately, I became a legally resident citizen, I, sorry, Asian, and then I moved on to the green card pretty fast. The delay from moving from the green card, which is actually pink, to eventually becoming a citizen was a delay entirely of my choosing. Because when you're faced with the actual cutting of the ties of your home country, it makes you pause for a second. It actually aches and it hurts a little bit. And I realized that to fully embrace the privileges, the responsibilities of being an American citizen, on voting on what my family could have access to, et cetera, through all the procedures we do, I decided to go on the path and become an American citizen. It took me six months. Stick the paperwork in, bada bing bada boom, you get called forward, you get processed, and next thing I know, I'm with a whole bunch of people down in Mechanics Hall in Worcester. A very slick process. A couple of comments that people have made, but I just want to just click here. You get the social security number pretty much the first week you arrive here. If you go and register it, I got my card immediately. There's a lot of things that are already in place. I don't see any barriers for people who want to become a citizen, but I just want to use myself as a middle-of-the-road example about how easy it was to become and why I chose to become so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have Cynthia King.
Great, Cynthia, welcome.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah, sounds great. Thanks, Cynthia.
So I have to agree with both Dennis and the gentleman that spoke, and I think it was also Phil. I just might add, I, I did want to bring up, because somebody there said it could take ten to fifteen years. However, I know a few people that have become citizens, and it's taken them like, under eighteen months, and some of them six months. I think that if you want the right to vote, you need to become a citizen. In order to be, to become a citizen, you have to take civics course, you have to learn English, and you have to also abide by the Constitution. And asking for a green card holder to vote doesn't involve any of those. And I, I looked up a little bit, and it was as of 2020. We had twenty-five million non-citizens, which it's greatly increased in the last five years. But at that time, there were twelve million permanent residents and two million with green cards, and two million with tourists, students, foreign, foreign workers. And you could have somebody come in, they could be a student, have a green card, and walk in and vote with no education on how, how our government works, and, and vote. And that takes away from a citizen voter. And I, I just want to add, a couple of years ago, the League of Women Voters had a committee that formed, and I was on that, and it was, it was involved in non-citizens voting. And we met many times, and then it stopped, because we had somebody that came in from the Center of Immigration and Studies, and I'd be happy to have her come and talk to you. She did an excellent presentation on immigration and the right to vote. And I think, you know, I, I'm not for non-citizens voting in any election, and I, I don't think we should lessen or belittle what it means to vote in a town meeting or in town elections. It's as important as it is to vote internationally. What we do in the town also has an effect on a statewide and a national level, so that's all I have to say.
Great, thanks for sharing your opinion. Cynthia. Megan, do you want to?
Megan O'Connell, still at Forty-Four South Comster Durd. I wasn't going to say anything about this particular topic, but I do feel like I do want to add a few things. One is that, you know, green card holders already have tremendous opportunity to be involved in the town. As was already mentioned, you know, they can be appointed to many different boards, except Finance Committee, but any of the other number of boards that we have, and some of them are, and that's wonderful. You know, they have the opportunity to come and, and talk in front of different boards, like yourselves, the Select Board, School Committee, you know, during open forum, and that's a wonderful thing. I, I welcome all of that. But I do think that there should be, there should be, there should be something special about becoming a citizen. And to me, that ultimate thing is being able to vote, as others have said earlier. So I just want you all to keep that in mind as well, that just because they don't have the right to vote right now, it doesn't mean they can't get involved in the town. And again, many of them do, and that's a great thing. But that last step of being able to vote should only come when they become citizens. Thank you.
Two more online. Emily Teller.
Hi, Emily.
Hey, thanks very much for letting me speak tonight. I hope the Select Board does decide to do a task force for this. I think that would say a lot about the town's willingness to embrace diversity and inclusion. I do have some questions, though, for Sandra, sorry, Sandaya. She talked about, yes, Sandia, thank you so much, I'm sorry. The population data, it looks like you have registered voters nineteen thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-eight, and residents eighteen and above, twenty thousand. So that difference is roughly, very roughly, twelve hundred. But then, it talks about the Asian population as being twenty-three point three percent. That must include people under eighteen in town, correct?
It's the population, yes. It's, it's the total population.
Okay, so it's twenty-three percent of twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
Okay. And then, what's the difference, please, between a green card holder and a permanent resident?
A green card holder basically is a permanent resident. You get a permanent residency card, which is called a green card.
So it's the same thing?
It's the same thing, yes.
Okay. I love how it's pink. Thank you for that, Dennis, or whoever said that. And then, I guess that, those are my only questions. But I hope that the Select Board will take this seriously and consider twenty-five percent of our population's possibility for paying taxes and how they can be included.
Thanks, Emily. And there's, there's one more.
Yes, Marie Fulford.
Welcome, Marie.
Hi, I was just wondering if you guys can hear me?
Yeah, you sound great.
Oh, hi, hi. Some of you know me, I'm Marie Fulford, I, I work for the town in the Facilities Department. I'm also a Canadian who's moved down here nine years ago. I am not a citizen, but I am a permanent card holder, I have a green card, I'm allowed to work legally. I own a house here, we pay our taxes, our children go to all the Westford schools, we are patrons of all the businesses around here, and I would highly encourage the Select Board to look into this, to allow us green card holders to be able to vote. I feel as though a lot of us are very involved in Westford, we love Westford. We unfortunately are not citizens due to many circumstances, however, I always compare to what, if I've been living here for X amount of years, and I'm very involved in the town, however, I'm not allowed to vote in the town, how is it that somebody, let's say, that's moving from Texas or California, and just moves to Westford all of a sudden, and then the now, next town election, hey, they're citizens, but they're not from here, they know what, they don't know what's going on, but they're allowed to vote on certain topics, whereas I may be more involved, I may be more aware of what's happening, but I don't have a vote in it. How is it, as somebody, a few people have mentioned, certain votes being canceled are not as worth other votes because they're just not citizens? Why would somebody that's coming from out of state, that's just moved to Westford, why would their vote count more than mine? So, these are just things that would be nice to be considered. I support this and look forward to hearing any developments in this. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Marie.
May Panta, who was one of the presenters, also has her hand raised.
Okay, welcome, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for letting me speak this afternoon. I just wanted to chime in as well. I am also an immigrant, I am a citizen, and I, I just wanted to give a little bit of, a little bit of background, you know? Many of us here, like Marie mentioned, have children here, we're very involved in the town, and love Westford. Unfortunately, things take time, and by the time you open your eyes again, after you've woken up, it's five years later, and your children are already on to middle school, high school, and things have changed. So what we're trying to propose here is not to make changes to impact Westford negatively, it's to impact Westford positively, because our children are here, and we want the future of Westford to be brighter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Okay. So I think we've got an input from the public. So the, the topic before us as we deliberate is really whether we should consider impaneling a study group or a Citizens Action Committee to, to, I think, go ahead and take a look at this issue. You should hear many of these excellent points that we've heard tonight, do a little bit of public education about this, answer questions. So what's, what's our, our feeling about that?
So my feeling is that this is going to be one of those issues that's going to be, I think, a difficult choice for a lot of people to make, but I don't think it's one that we should not try to make as a community. And I think the first step of doing that is to get more educated on things like numbers, impact to, you know, town staff, town clerk's office, how long it could possibly take us if it does go through in its past of town meetings, and the logistics. So I would be very in favor of at least investigating that type of, those types of issues and getting some information back for both us and the residents of Westford to consider.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
I agree with Chris. I think I'm very conflicted on both sides of it. I see both sides of what everyone's saying, so I'd like to have more information as well. I think reaching out to the community is a good idea.
I'm still stewing.
He's still.
Pass. I'm thinking more on the principal thing, you know, the opportunity's there for anybody doing the census. And, you know, somebody talked about roadblocks, I don't know what those roadblocks would be, but the number in Westford is relatively small, I think, just looking at the numbers. You just exclude everybody's registered, kids that are not even in school yet, and you come down to fewer than a thousand, maybe, or a few hundred.
Yeah, if you subtract some.
But the workload on, I'm not worried about the workload on the staff, to me, that's immaterial. If it's the right thing to do or the wrong thing to do. And I sympathize with the folks that can't vote, but they, they make their choice. It's their choice to not apply for citizenship, it's open to them, and they can do that. Now, I understand the quandary about, you know, you can't have dual citizenship.
Yeah.
That's out of their control.
I think there's a really good point, I didn't catch up, but there are excellent points on both sides. I guess the question is, how do you feel about creating a study committee?
I mean, I mean, it's, another study committee, I don't know what, I mean, we could take a, we could take a deeper look at it, look at the legalities, because there's some challenges here that say that if we did so, it would be illegal. I think that would, that would, that would be worth knowing.
Absolutely.
And it might be worth knowing the numbers, and maybe even the rationale for people that are here that want to vote, but don't want to become citizens. And, and you say, that's a choice. And, and we're, we're trying to make that choice. And then those that have worked become citizens, and everybody cherishes that, and this kind of says that, you know, it's not really that, you don't have to, at least for voting in town elections.
Okay.
I'm worried about that.
John, do you have a take?
Yeah, I, I'm conflicted on the inevitable decision of this, but I think that's all the more reason to have more investigation, right? Because I, I think that there's, there's serious questions as to, like, legality, and you have a complicated issue where you have federal law being involved too, so, you know, I, I want more information as to numbers, cost. Yeah, I, I guess I'm less concerned about prospect, John, but certainly the legality and the like. So let's get some more information, and I think that's the right task force.
Yeah, my, I think my take is that this is a strongly, as we've heard tonight, and as I've heard at Market Basket, and I've talked to people about this, people have very strong, almost immediate reactions on this.
Sure.
And there's two ways this could come forward. It can come forward as a citizens petition, it comes forward as something that we endorse, we would decide that later, present, not endorse. That would happen later. In either case, though, I think that we benefit from having a thoughtful public study that took a little bit of time and was pretty thorough. Because I think either way, the residents are going to be making this decision at town meeting, and I'd like them to have the benefit of broad community engagement, know what people think, have good answers to these questions, like legality. I mean, it's certainly the case that, I don't know if I'm trying to pick an example, if we, if someone raises an issue that could potentially kill the whole thing, and we don't have a thoughtful answer, it's going to be a very confusing, very confusing voting environment. I'd rather have, why did Concord or Wayland believe that they weren't going to have a constitutionality issue? What does our council think? Like, I'd like to have that, it'd be part of the discussion, and I think the way to do that is to, is to impanel a committee.
Sure.
So, I think, I, I know John's still, still thinking about this, but it sounds like we're, four of us are in consensus.
I think we keep the guy, we just don't know what for.
Okay. So I think, Chris, I'd be interested in your input on this, I think we would come back maybe at the next meeting with a proposal of, this is what the charter would be, this is how many slots there would be, this is who would be represented, and then basically have something we can debate as an actual proposal, which we don't have tonight. Does that sound like we're on track?
Yep.
Okay. And I don't think we vote on that, I think that's just a consensus item, so.
I'm sorry, Tom, so the charter would, would instruct the?
Charter would instruct the work of the committee. So it's a.
The committee, okay.
Scope it in time, and say, this is how many voting members, how many alternates, and it would say, basically, in a tight paragraph, this is, this is what we'd like you to go find out.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So I think we're in consensus, but before we are through with you for the night, Sandia, any, do you have any questions for us, or any, anything that?
No, I.
Left an answer here in terms of what you came here tonight for?
Yeah, no, I really appreciate the feedback, honestly. I'm here for the feedback. I've been working with the state and, and with municipal government for a long time now, so, you know, and been Massachusetts resident for a long time, and Westford resident for a long time as well. So definitely involved, and very involved with a lot of things locally, as well as in the state level. Having the, this question about voting rights is not about whether I, citizenship or not, the voting rights is more about how much diversity are we able to allow for the voting. That's, that's something that I want to leave the Select Board with, the thought process that I want to leave the Select Board with. And it's, I would strongly also suggest that looking at numbers very closely to the town meeting would make it very difficult, because a lot of these, these numbers change rapidly, very frequently. The population number changes, as well as, you know, the, the density and diversity of a town, and municipality changes as well. So based on these fluctuating numbers, creating that, something like a policy change makes it really hard. It's, it's almost like, do we want to create a policy which is high-level? And I, I am rooting for a high-level, I, I'm a municipal worker, I love high-level. I don't want to go deep into anything. So high-level policy change really helps everyone by taking a position, it's almost like we're asking Westford to take a position, and not go deep into how much that number, whether it's thousand, twelve hundred people who are able to vote or not vote, so I just want to.
Great, I understand your point. Great, well, thank you for being here tonight, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much.
And thank you again for your work on the Economic Development Committee.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at our seven-twenty item, which is the presentation from Northern Middle Sex Council of Governments, lovingly known as NIMCOG, on the At Home and Greater Lowell Draft Strategies. And we're welcoming Chris Hayes. And?
Kelly Lanema.
And Kelly Lanema, welcome.
These are a little bit larger than the handouts you have, so maybe a little bit easier.
Sure, please. Okay.
Nope, sorry.
So I'm, I'm, I guess my name's on the agenda, I'm Chris Hayes, Housing and Economic Development Program Manager for Northern Middle Sex Council of Governments, but I'll actually let my colleague, Deputy Director Kelly Lanema, kind of start us off, kick us off, introduce why we're here tonight.
Thank you. And thank you, members of the Select Board, thank you for welcoming, welcoming us here on what I hope is the hottest day of the year. Could get better from here. So as Chris mentioned, my name is Kelly Lanema, I'm the Deputy Director at the Northern Middle Sex Council of Governments, or NIMCOG. I know some of you are familiar with us, but just quickly, for anybody who's not as familiar with NIMCOG, or anybody who's watching or in the, in the room here, NIMCOG is a regional planning agency based in Lowell, and we work with Lowell and the eight surrounding communities, including Westford. So each of our communities pays an assessment into, into our revenue, and we also are funded, largely funded by federal and state dollars. And in return, we provide sort of capacity building services to each of our member municipalities. We do a lot of regional planning, but then we also do individual plans at the request of our communities. We're here tonight to talk about At Home in Greater Lowell, and this is something that is not an individual request from any of our communities, but is more of a cumulative request. We actually began this process back in 2022. Our new Executive Director at the time, Jennifer Raitt, had gone around to each of our communities, talked with elected and appointed leaders in each of those communities, and really was trying to understand as part of our, our own strategy. own strategic planning process, what are the top concerns from each of our communities? And without a doubt, every single one of those people that she spoke to mentioned housing, and in particular, the high cost of housing. Now, we know that housing is a very controversial topic. It's not something that's always easy to discuss. People have a lot of different opinions about housing and where housing should go and who should be responsible for creating it. But we really wanted to initiate this process because, sort of unlike having a state requirement, we wanted to do more of a grassroots or bottom-up approach to planning around housing. But think about it from a regional perspective, because the needs for housing for Lowell are maybe different from the housing needs of Westford and the housing needs of Dunstable. But when you think about us all as a region, we have people who live in Dunstable but work in Westford, or people who live in Westford and work in Lowell. And so these things are, you can't really think about each individual community just only within its own board, own borders. So we really started this process because we wanted to create, first wanted to collect data, develop really good tools to help our communities address these housing issues that, that each of them have talked about facing. So this effort's really about helping our communities take the lead and developing really both region-wide approaches, but then kind of customizing them based on what our communities want to see, and including Westford. And I just want to take a moment to applaud the work that Westford's been doing to be more proactive about planning for housing and instead of just sort of letting state requirements come onto Westford. I think Westford's kind of a model of what we'd love to see some of our other communities doing. We, in this planning process, really want to support each of our communities in, in shaping its own future and identifying policies that are going to work for them. And so this presentation is really based on the draft of Phase One of this report. It's not yet public, but this is really an opportunity we'd like to invite you to kind of weigh in on some of the goals and strategies that Chris is going to share with you, to really understand, are there areas that kind of raise a red flag for you? Are there things that you definitely support or would like to see in Westford? Are there things you have questions about? And if we have time tonight to answer some of those questions, we'd love to do that. So I will hand this over to Chris. He'll walk you through some of the key data and those regional trends and those goals. And then we'd love to open it up for questions or conversation.
Thanks. Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board, to let us paddle on a little bit tonight. Should I just go next slide, Ren? So first slide, next.
Raise a finger.
Next slide, all right. So I'll talk just a little bit about the process that we undertook to create the Part One of At Home and Greater Lowell. And most of the time, we'd like to answer your questions or hear comments about your strategies, and we also want to talk about what's next for At Home and Greater Lowell. And Kelly, all you mentioned kind of the genesis of this coming from the communities. But one other thing that we actually heard from was from businesses, from economic groups, including Chamber, Middlesex Three Coalition, that they wanted to know what a regional approach to housing would look like. And so we kind of took both those requests and began figuring out what a regional plan should look like. Slide, please. And so what we quickly learned when we started doing, diving into the data, was that the projected population growth for our region overall isn't that much, but the projected household growth is still pretty high. That's because households are aging and getting smaller. So a slightly larger population needs a much more diverse types of units, smaller units, more accessible units. Slide, please. And as we've seen this changing population needing these smaller, more numerous units, we've seen vacancy rates go down by quite a bit. Generally speaking, 8% is considered a healthy rental vacancy rate, 2% is a healthy for-sale vacancy rate, and we're down to 2.5% for rentals and almost 0% for sales units, meaning that second a house goes on the market, it's sold very, very quickly thereafter. We can go to the next slide. And so that's really, if you saw, we've got another graph, it is exact mirror and shows housing price, housing prices over inflation. And we see just the vacancy and the housing prices be pretty perfectly correlated. And then as a result, we've seen increasing housing cost burden, which are those who pay more than 30% of their income on housing. And that's about a third of our households in the NIMCOG region. 14% are severely cost burdened. That means they pay more than half their income on housing. And so that's really the critical population that is having a lot of trouble, and they're generally in the lower income brackets. Next slide, please. But even though that's kind of a small slice of the population, what we've heard as we've done interviews over the municipal, excuse me, over the regional planning process, is that we're seeing impacts in the short term, i.e. that we're seeing them now, of seniors struggling to stay in communities as they age, and labor shortages of working folks like teachers, healthcare, police, fire. And then we've got some longer-term concerns, especially as we're talking to businesses for young adults leaving for less expensive areas, and we are seeing that in census data. We are of fear, and businesses are beginning to express that they may need to relocate outside of the region or outside of the state entirely because of the difficulty recruiting labor at wages that could pay for this, this housing. And then finally, that, that's a long-term concern of an increasing burden on the remaining residents to fuel the economy and to, to pay taxes for municipal services. So we learned all that in the last year, and we also did a number of summits. You can go to the next slide. And this is really where we took all of that data and moved it into the goals and strategies that are, that are in this handout. We talked to over, over 150, I think nearly 200 people altogether between three summits and a survey and a number of one-on-one interviews, including municipal planners from Westford and all the other towns and the city of Lowell. Next slide, please. And so what we resulted in is the data and strategies that we're talking about today. And why we want to talk to you and to the other eight communities is because we're wrapping up this Part One. So we want to make sure we get it right, because Part Two is going to be a toolkit and implementation guide. So it's going to have information and perhaps model zoning, or perhaps outreach materials that are about implementing these strategies. So before we start working on those, we want to make sure that those are the right strategies. We also will be engaging in a storytelling program where we try to elevate some stories of folks on all sides of the housing spectrum to give both us and the public a better understanding of how different housing policies play out on the ground. Slide, please. And so what we want to do is have that conversation with you today, work with the town manager to share the finalized version after we incorporate all the different comments from the nine municipalities. Then we want to regularly communicate through Phase Two, making sure to get your input and, and thoughts and questions as we develop that Part Two Toolkit Implementation Guide. Then finally, we hope if you have us and you don't take up too much time, we, you will, you'll let us return to share the, the Part Two Implementation Guide. And so what we are asking today, and I'm going to talk about a few specific strategies that bubbled up in the survey that we sent around to municipal officials in the town of Westford, but really, we're asking this question about all of the goals and strategies that are in this handout. And we want to know if you would support advancing the strategies? What, what would you need? What tools or what support would you need if they are strategies that you think are good? And then finally, how could we adjust key actions, answer questions, or otherwise build support for actions that you might have more questions or concern about? Next slide, please. Just as an example of some of the strategies, 1.1 is always an interesting one because it's about zoning. It's, it's basically the only strategy that really directly addresses zoning that we have in here, because we know it's so unique to each municipality, and it's going to look different in each municipality, but we know it's an important piece of the housing puzzle. And what we're really suggesting is, is missing middle zoning. And that is adopting zoning that could support small cottage-style, small lot developments that are great for seniors or new families just starting out. Maybe it also includes, depending on the town, two-family, three-family, or townhomes. In, in a larger community, it might be quads or small, you know, small multifamily. But it really is something that we see are missing, because we see big, let's say, 40B developments, honestly, and we see single-family little, little houses, big houses on big lots. And those are really the only two things. So that's talking about adding some of that middle back into our communities. Next slide. Modular housing is, is a little controversial, and that's why we want to explore it more as part of Part Two. We've seen new technologies that are able to reduce the cost of housing, especially reduce the, the time it takes to build the housing. More than anything, and time is money, and that's why it does reduce the cost ultimately. And so we have a few actions, including trying to find the best, most attractive and well-built models, looking to do maybe pilot projects, maybe even looking to partner with nearby manufactured, I don't know, manufactured homes, but modular or panelized housing producers that are nearby. And I think there's one in Lexington, there's some in others, and try and use that as maybe a workforce strategy as well. Next slide. And then finally, oh, there's no image there, but it was just of people taking a class.
They left.
They left. They, they learned about fair housing. That is another strategy, is looking to do fair housing training for boards and committees, specifically planning boards, select boards, and maybe ZBAs. And that really is about maybe having folks come once a year to those boards and committees to just talk about the federal and state requirements under those laws. But that might also be like a regional get-together once a year where planning board members can meet planning board members of other communities and share information and talk along with learning about those, those laws and regulations. I believe that's it. Is there the next slide? It just says the questions again to remind you. So we really appreciate the time and are really eager to hear any questions or comments you have.
Before we go to comments, maybe I thought, Kristen, if you wanted to share the work that, that you've done and we've done developing the town strategic plan and what that speaks to as far as housing?
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, hearing some of these aligns very closely with what we've discovered over the past year and a half with our housing production plan as well as our strategic plan. So one of our key strategies is diverse and attainable housing options. And we say that Westford encourages and promotes the development of diverse housing options that meet a broad range of income levels and life stages of our current and future residents. And Westford strives to be a community where people both want to and can afford to live. And some of our strategies, I think, line up directly under your strategies, identifying infrastructure upgrades that will help support housing needs, review zoning laws and proposed changes that support town housing goals, support the development of affordable housing opportunities for future and current residents, organize a housing summit, and develop tax incentives for builders and owners to promote small home building. So I think Jenny and Kelly and Chris have heard this from me at some of our municipal managers' meetings, but I'm happy to forward this along as well. We're now fleshing out how do we accomplish those strategies and in what time period we do that. So we'd love to work in tandem that we're kind of doing this together rather than breaking apart. So just reminding the public and the board and NIMCOG what we worked on very closely over the past year, year and a half.
Questions from the board? Yeah, Chris?
So, great presentation. Thank you for your time. I do think that, you know, as you've stated, housing is of a critical importance for many of the residents of Westford, and it's a significant concern. Nobody wants to see, you know, when they get older, having to move out from their community base in, in for decades because they no longer, you know, find a, like a house to downsize to, for example, or afford. And I think one of the biggest challenges that we face is we've taken some action to try and comply with state requirements like MBTA, zoning district, and other mechanisms to try to improve the amount of housing that we have. But that's really just yielded, I think one of you two said, you know, the big 40B developments, right? Which I don't think a lot of the residents really get behind. So I personally love this 1.1, you know, the cottage-style housing. I think that would really fit the need and the character of the community. So if there's any way we can, you know, work collaboratively together to figure out how to, you know, enact zoning and whatever we have to do to, to make those more accessible and, and really attractive for developers, because at the end of the day, that's what we really need to do, is to make sure developers want to build them, I'd be all for that. Because I really think that will help settle a lot of the needs that we have in these communities right now, in a way that retains the look and feel and the character of this community.
If I may, just one of the examples that we have, and we don't have that visual here, but one of the things we're seeing communities, really around New England, start to do is think about, you know, a lot of times you see like a smaller cape get torn down and replaced by something that maximizes the footprint. So maybe instead of one house that's 5,000 to 7,000 square feet, what if that's three units in a house, and it looks like a house that has 7,000 square feet, but you actually can put three families in that instead of one? So there, there are some really interesting examples. And then maybe in Phase Two, kind of digging into, what is the policy that's resulting in developers wanting to build that instead of just building a single-family home for $2.4 million, which doesn't really solve anybody's problems?
And our MBTA zoning does allow for those cottage-style developments, but like Kelly said, how do we attract the developer to come to town to build those rather than a three, four, or five-story apartment complex?
That's, that's really what we got to figure out.
And I, I just, just to quickly add, I don't want to say there is a place for those type of apartment buildings, too. It's all stages of life. I lived in one up until quite recently. But I think what we've been seeing, and so you'll see several of the strategies are about smaller developers. Generally, we've seen that smaller developers tend to build, you know, a, a one triple-decker, you know, or one set of three little cottages. And that's a little bit harder because it's riskier, because it doesn't provide as large a margin of profit that the banks want to look for to give a loan out. So I do think it's important to make, find ways to make that easy and to have them have access to capital as well.
Yeah, so I completely agree with Chris that, like, some real-life case studies of a whole project moving through. So we've got some vision of, like, what's, what's economically attractive for a developer? What are some examples of people actually doing it? If there's case studies of, of it being very hard for small developers to pull that together, we want to know that, so that we've got some, like, library of case studies. The other thing I think we need to work on, it'd be interesting to know if you could help us. We had a, we had a development that failed at town meeting that was sort of like exactly what the strategic plan calls for. It was, I think it was called a quarry development. I can't remember. It was a 55-plus, 80-units, looked beautiful.
They're about a meter of school.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, made, made use of something that would have been great for, I mean, it was exactly the kind of housing people say they want. It failed at town meeting. I think that, that something we can do is, is sort of help people here think about what awesome looks like. Like, I, I think there's, there's this natural feeling that, okay, if it's a zoning variance, the density's too high, and people have all kinds of, like, bad association with that. I think that, that means you're pushing uphill to get the S, instead of there being kind of a background noise of like, yeah, I've seen awesome developments that look like this, and like this, and like this. So that someone that's there bringing something forward isn't pushing a huge rock up a hill. Maybe they're just having to nudge it. Because I think, some of this won't need to go to town meeting maybe, but I think there's sort of some work we can do, helping the public get like a, a better vision of what awesome looks like. And so we may not have the resources, but if part of your work is to come up with little case studies of, here's a development that looked like this, wildly successful, community kind of like Westford, initial resistance, but people love it now, like, that I think can be helpful, too. Other, other comments for these folks?
Well, you know, I'm just trying to visualize what, what it might look like and what combination of housing we wind up with. Because you're always bumping up against open space requirements. You know, we've got about a quarter of the town area is either owned by the town or it's under restriction. Then you start looking at, what do you do with the open space? And then, at least the MBTA, we're overlaying where there's existing construction, existing. That's, we did that on purpose. So now the question is, where would you put all this? And what, what would be, is there a model that says a certain percentage of certain types of housing? And that's, that's almost worrisome in some ways, trying to establish something like that or dictate something. dictate something like that, because the economy's going to tell you what's going to work. So it's just trying to visualize how that's going to look.
I mean, part of the work that we need to do in Phase Two is, you know, we know that we need approximately 19,000 new housing units, new homes, right, in the next 10 years.
It's all in NIMCOG.
But that's the whole region, right? So, you know, if you, yeah, yeah. If you left that up to any individual community, they'd say, great, put it in this community next to me, not in mine. So part of the challenge that we need to do is to really start to break down, not to be prescriptive about it, which is like, Westford has to produce this many units of this type, but to understand, you know, given your existing fabric, you know, given that a lot of what we're talking about is redevelopment of already developed properties, we're not interested, you know, we also want to preserve our natural open spaces. So where do we want to preserve versus grow? And then what does that growth look like? How much of it is affordable? How much of it is like a two-family or three-family versus a mid-size or a larger multifamily development? And really kind of starting to tease out those numbers per community. And that's the work that we have ahead for us. But again, it's, a lot of this isn't about creating binaries, because I think that's maybe the way that people think about housing right now, which is either a single-family home with a big fence, or a, you know, a five-story apartment building, and it's not always one extreme or the other.
So, you know, part of the elephant in the room is, where do we get all this energy to provide this? I mean, it's replacement in kind, replacement in kind of scope. That works, but when you look at something that's bigger, more, and then we're looking at that elephant about going all-electric, you know, the environmental regulations and so forth, so.
Yeah, we're running into grid capacity issues.
Yeah, it's just the capacity.
I explained that to NIMCOG too many times.
Part of the background.
That's why, Strategy 6.3 in here is, one thing we have modified since we've printed this is that it's not just about understanding sewer capacity, but it's understanding our regional need for energy. And that's something that we're hearing, not just in Westford, but in a lot of our other communities as well.
You mentioned sort of articulating not, we need 400...